Here tonight?
Yeah, she went home, uh, sit today from work and so she did call us on the way saying that she was not gonna be able to make it today.
Okay. All right, and let's go ahead and get started here. If anyone could please stand and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Vice Chair Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner McHouston.
Here.
Commissioner Mill.
Here.
Commissioner Mullins.
Here.
And absent from tonight's meeting are Chair Phillips and Commissioner O'Brien. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
No comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda? Approval of the Planning Commission meeting, yes?
I'll approve it.
You're making a motion to a-
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
One abstain. I missed part of the meeting last week, or last day.
Okay. So noted. Okay, is there any, uh, ex parte communications? We need to disclose here tonight? All right. Uh, we'll open the hearing then to, uh, item number, number two.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. Tonight we have before you case number twenty-four oh 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 four. Uh, planning hearing entitlement for the review of a tentative track map, TTM number two zero six nine nine, to subdivide a three point two four acre parcel into fourteen residential lots of at least seventy-two hundred square feet. Uh, the subdivision will include a three hundred and sixty foot cul-de-sac located at the northeast corner of Holmes and County Line Road. A little background about the project, the site is located northeast of Holmes Street and County Line Road. Uh, the parcel is generally flat but does slope towards the southwest, uh, more significantly towards the north and eastern portions of the property. Kind of at the very edges, um, and the general plan designation for this site is, uh, single residential seventy-two hundred square foot lot size minimum, uh, parcels. It is surrounded by a single-family residential development with the city of Calamasa to the south. Here you can see an exhibit of track map number two zero six nine nine. It is, as I said earlier, a fourteen lot subdivision along a new public road, uh, with right-of-way width providing adequate, uh, width for both the parking, landscaping, um, right-of-way travel, uh, sidewalk and curb and gutter with a new, uh, three hundred and twenty-nine linear foot cul-de-sac with fire turnaround at the end. Um, the water quality management program is proposed throughout the site, um, uh, through drainage swales with a, and the site will also include a landscape easement along County Line Road to kind of soften, um, the impact of the development. Uh, further, as a part of tentative track map number two zero six nine nine, uh, the project will be required annexed into a lighting, lighting landscaping and maintenance district or an LMD. Um, it is currently proposed for lot sales and for the development of one and two-story homes. If a single developer were to pursue construction of the entire site or any repeating design, separate architectural review would be required to be presented to the Planning Commission. The tentative map is consistent with the general plan requirements and the Development Code. And so because of that, staff recommends adoption of a categorical exemption pursuant to section number one five three three two, a class thirty-two infill exemption of the secret guidelines. As a part of the project review, notices were sent to all neighbors within three hundred feet of the project. Two responses were received, a telephone call with concerns, concerns over the size of the proposed development and a written response was, uh, requesting a perimeter wall as well as single-story units. Uh, the density of the site is consistent with land use district and the units, um, can be either one or two-story units per the Development Code, but the project will be conditioned to provide a perimeter wall, uh, per the standard conditions of the tentative track map in the city of Ycapa. Here are a couple of photos of the site. And therefore to staff's recommendation, uh, that you approve the tentative track map number two zero six nine nine, subject to the conditions of approval, adopt the findings as contained in the agenda report, uh, find that the proposed project is consistent with a class thirty-two exemption and file, uh, direct staff to file a notice of exemption. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions that you may have of staff and I know that the applicant, uh, applicant's representative is here as well.
Is there any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Okay.
Regarding the, oh, sorry. I got a loud voice, so I didn't know what I needed. Sorry. Question regarding the, um, development or annexation of a CFD and a Melrose. Uh, and there's also developmental, uh, developed fees that are in there? So is that, can you explain that to me so that I understand if I approve what I'm approving?
Um, so, uh, a few different things. So any new construction or new development is subject to development impact fees and so that essentially covers, long and kind of short of it is, as the city reaches build-out population, we have a pe- number of different infrastructure requirements to get us there. And so is that total infrastructure development divided by each new development and their fair share cost? So as we expand roadways, as we expand the drainage infrastructure, those are the fees that are levied upon, um, the development related to, to facilitate that development, given that the property taxes and all that stuff is set through Prop 15, it doesn't cover that, that type of growth. On the other end, um, the CFD is for kind of the ongoing public services is, um, come assessment residential u- units don't always kind of always cover their full burden cost and so City Council had adopted a policy, um, last year where kind of all new development would be subject to a CFD to make sure that if there is any discrepancy on the long-term fiscal impacts to the general fund that that development is making up for that through that CFD. And then the last part, the, the LMD itself is just for the maintenance of any common area, uh, landscaping, since there won't be an HOA or some other entity in place. It will annex into that where has an assessment that can facilitate that. So if there's, let's say, water quality management items that are more, you know, centrally focused, then there's at least a mechanism to cover the maintenance of those related issues.
So the development fees cover the development and bringing in all the infrastructure, correct?
That's right.
So then, does the city have the authority to institute Melrose without going to the voters?
Um, we do because it is, uh, related to the individual project. So the Melrose doesn't go to existing development. And in that case, it would have to go to voters. In this case, it'd be the applicant as the voting member and as a condition of their approval.
And those Melrose, is it, is there a limit to that or is it forever? Is it into eternity?
There is-
Once they're established or is there a bond set aside for all of the work that had to be done? And that Melrose would cover it until a certain date in time?
So this one would cover the infrastructure, this would be public services. So kind of the offset for the fire fund and other stuff for public safety and those kind of related stuff. So it's gonna cover kind of the ongoing related, um, um, public services that are needed that is not captured from property taxes alone.
And is it, is it based on the square footage of the house or what is the number, how do, how is the Melrose value or the cost?
There will be a, uh, fiscal study done, um, and so we're actually in the process of developing that study through a consultant at the start of the fiscal year. And so I'll have kind of a, a per-unit kind of assessment, uh, basis for typical residential projects.
And this one doesn't have a developer currently. This is just the plan, is that what I heard?
That is-
So you could have multiple developers within this, these fourteen?
Each individual homeowner.
Or someone could come in and build on each of these lots, fourteen? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question. So on the northwest corner and in the southeast corner sidewalks end into this property on each side? With the track map and everything pointing down the line, are they gonna be responsible for continuing the sidewalks all the way around this border property along County Line and Holmes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Hearing none. Is the applicant here tonight and would you like to address the Planning Commission?
Good evening. My name's, uh, Bernie Mayer. With SciTech Engineering. We're the engineers for the property and representing the owner tonight. I wanted to thank the commission for air and air project this evening, uh, and wanted to thank staff for their help, especially Christian. And, uh, we've reviewed the conditions of approval with the owner and we don't have any questions on those. And, uh, I'm here to answer questions that you might have.
Any questions of the applicant? I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna turn it back to the commission here. Comments? Questions?
Not for me.
I think we do have a public comment on this item.
We do? Oh, okay. Listen.
We have, uh, Amy Mulder.
Good evening. I am a resident, um, on Sarah Street. I live at one three six seven six Sarah Street. So my backyard is up against the property. And, um, it's gonna ruin my view, um, which, uh, my neighbors as well, which I know we don't really have control over. But I'm, I'm concerned about the wall and how, how, and I guess right now we probably don't know what kind of wall they're gonna put up. But we have, cause I'm gonna have to do another fence if it doesn't go all the way up to my fence. So I'm concerned about that. We've put a lot of money in our backyard. We have a pool. If it's a two-story home, it's gonna look in our backyard. So not only ruin our view, but also our, we won't have privacy anymore in our home. So I don't, I don't know if it's too early to talk about that, but those are my husband and I's concerns about the, about this project. And, um, traffic, of course, and, you know, it'll be nice to not have a field and, and I, I also had a question for Chris. Christian has been great, um, communicating. But he told me that the houses were gonna be between twenty-seven hundred to thirty-two hundred square feet, which if there's not a builder, um, I don't know how that, I guess that's, can't discuss that either. But when I asked about the home prices, he said between, um, mid-fives to six, and that just seems extremely low for homes, you know, that big in that area. So I don't know if there's any comments on that.
If I can clarify, I acted as a middleman between the developer's representative and, uh, Ms. Mulder and provided his responses to some of her questions to her. Those aren't numbers that I came up with. Those are from the developer. So it might be a better question for, rather than myself.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just touch briefly on that is, we're not here to determine prices and that, the market will determine the value of, of, of real estate here. What we can control is somewhat of, of the size of homes and has to be consistent or within a range of surrounding properties. I believe that, that the city has an ordinance to that effect or we had it in some other areas, haven't we, Ben?
So the minimum house size for the single-family residential district is seven hundred twenty-five square feet. That said, our average, um, home that we see built in terms of building current records is in the, 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 I think twenty-two to twenty-three hundred square feet. And so generally speaking, with lots of these sizes, this is more of a traditional size, uh, residential lot. So you would see something more aligned with that traditional square footage. That's where the market is, seven twenty-five, which is the bare minimum, isn't really a market for it. And so, uh, given the average, we probably expect the, the two thousand plus square foot.
And that will be determined by whoever's going to build at the time and depending what the market's gonna be. We, we, thank you for your comments and your questions and that, and I'm gonna ask the applicant to step up here if he would address the block wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to step forward and can you explain so that everybody understands where the block wall, the perimeter block wall would be? Would be at the toe of the slope, at the top of the slope?
They would be at the top of the slope, um, and they would be along County Line Road and Holmes Street. I don't recall whether we have a requirement to put block all the way around the development. But to, to answer your question as far as the, the fencing goes, typically in a situation like this, the developer will make communication with the adjacent owners. And, uh, typically the owner will say, my fence has been there a while, uh, I'll accept that you replace it with the material you're using for your development.
Back to staff.
Bernie's correct. It's only required along frontages of the project.
Yes, so it doesn't surround the whole, whole project, they're only required on Holmes and, uh,
Per the conditions of approval, that's correct. But as a, a builder, one could assume that, you know, privacy is a, a desired element. Um, I would also include, uh, I don't know if, if, uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed closely, the grade does change pretty significantly in between the, um, at the eastern boundary. And so there is, um, a, a little bit of height that's provided, uh, that, that may provide some additional privacy for, uh, the Mulders as well.
Okay, so, and that, that's one thing, we can't presume what anybody's going to do. Uh, we can only accept what conditions are. So, so for clarification, there is no condition for this development to provide new fencing between the existing residents and this new track map?
No, there is, uh, no specific requirement for it. Um, I will note, um, as part of, uh, kind of looking, kind of tying into our safety element update, which is when the items tonight, this will be in the fire severity zone. And so they will have some, uh, some additional building code requirements for the, the lot separation stuff. And so that may play into what type of material ultimately gets selected. So like a wood fence or something, that would not be permissible in that, in that zone because of the, the fire, updated fire severity zone maps.
Just so the public and my fellow commissioners, and I'll ask this question, so with this, to say this project's approved tonight, there is no requirement for fencing per se? If there is a developer that comes in, acquires a property, wants to build it out, there's not requirement to put fencing in? Could, could, could a developer build a project without fencing?
There's technically nothing in our code that says you must provide a fence. Uh, the market though itself, just how we are.
I, 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 I understand the market, but I just wanna know and, and for the, so the audience understands that there is no requirement for that.
I have a, okay, question. You know, in the, in the past, over the last four-plus years I've been around this, we've kind of taken a hard line as Planning Commission to require builders to put a fence in, in these situations just because of residents. So I think that's an option that we have as a commission that we can ask for that requirement to be added. But, um, I'm just looking at the particular piece of property, it's probably the ladies that spoke, that this is the only one that has a pool. And, uh, but there is a nice, you know, there's, looks like about five to six feet of slope along that back property line. And, uh, and it's one of the larger lots. So, um, the, that's gonna give you some grade separation. And if there is a fence, you know, that's gonna prevent anybody even in a two-story house from really seeing in your backyard, given the setback it would look like. So, but again, I think that's, that's one of the options we have as a commission, that we can ask for a requirement for a wall in those or, you know, fencing of some type. And, uh, I know of, uh, the first couple of years, it was pretty hard line that it had to be block. But then we've, uh, since approved a lot of them that were vinyl fencing.
So the question, I guess the question I would have then is if you're gonna, if it were to be required, these are different builders on each lot.
Not, not necessarily there's builder.
I mean, it could be, could be.
Have they applied for this track map as a lot sale or, or is it track?
Correct. It is, uh, lot sales-
Lot sales.
At the moment, but I think that the options are open based on discussions that I've had with, uh, with the applicant's team. Um, I, I would also add that there are many existing fences at property line and so, um, what I would pause to think about is whether or not someone who has a nicer fence along a property line would want, uh, you know, a block wall suddenly, uh, when they might be happy with, uh, the perimeter fencing just as a consideration.
Does the applicant have any comments?
Um, no. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, the only thing I would add is that as, uh, Christian had pointed out, the development really hasn't got to the point where we're ready for an architectural review and really haven't determined a lot of those things yet. Uh, I would say, I'm sure he's gonna put fencing in, that the developer or the individual property owners. Where he likely it would be the vinyl type fencing that is fairly common nowadays. And we do have a condition to put a block wall along County Ri- Lot, County Line Road and Holmes Street. So those will be main street walls.
Okay. Any other questions of the-
So, so if we approve this tonight, can it come back for architectural review later about the walls and the height of them and everything for like the Mulders? Or does that need to be said situated today?
As part of, if it is like a, let's say a developer shows up and says, I'm gonna buy all fourteen lots and develop them, then that would trigger the architectural review. If they do ultimately do lot sales where each individual purchaser decides to build their own house, then that case it would not trigger architectural review because there's no, nothing in our code that triggers that, that, that review process. Just like if someone was building a single-family house themselves, they don't go to Plan Commission for approval for just that.
Okay. We had another question?
Yeah, um, is there any two-story homes in the area? Cause I can understand your concern and, um, the size of the lots are relatively small. So do they, um, would they be accepting of a two-story on that size lot? So two questions.
So the surrounding area largely is single-story, but we don't have any ther- anything in our development code, nor do I think we could impose a restriction on, uh, the height of the buildings. They could propose two-story and I think, um, just the trend in, in home builders would likely be for at least a mix of two-story homes.
I, I could respond to that. There are some two-story homes in that particular track adjacent to this track.
Yeah.
Okay. And there is a height limit in our development code for residential. So. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments?
I, if I may, uh, I would just say with individual lots, you know, that's a whole different animal than a track that one developer's building out. And, uh, I think, you know, the rest of the lots in that area or the other tracks were all built as tracks. So, uh, we just wanna be cautious that we don't end up with a mixed match of fences in between properties and along back property lines. And there should be some consideration for existing fences, of course. I think there's a lot of block walls in that track. So it's a little, but I think we should at least require some type of fencing.
Well, and I, I think, uh, we, if I'm understanding clearly, if it was developed as one builder, it's gonna come back to architectural and at that point in time we could impose-
But if it's-
Fencing. If it's individual lot sales-
We have no say.
We would have no sale to, uh, no say to that. With that, um, you know, we, we gotta look at wh- wh- what's our concern?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
If you have an idea or a motion.
I think the consistency is the, the most important thing with it. I know.
Then that's part of Ycapa is it's inconsistent.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't the applicant say they're gonna put in a wall along Holmes and County Line?
Yes.
So why don't we just require-
Just Holmes and County Line.
Okay, why don't we require it even though they're gonna do it and that settles that? And then as far as the rest of it-
Well, well, that is-
Why don't we stipulate a vinyl fence on the individual lots?
Okay.
What's wrong with that?
We could do whatever the majority of this commission wants to do, okay? With that, we gotta, in, in my opinion, we need to be a little cautious on how we're, um, requiring certain conditions, um, and, and materials, okay? Because today vinyl might be acceptable, but it might not be acceptable in ten years, you know? But, but the thing is, is that things will change, materials change and, and become more acceptable. So by, if we labeled something and said it must be a vinyl fence, then it must be, or they have to come back and, and get it re-approved.
Yeah, you know, to that, that point, um, especially with the, the fire severity zones, it does change some of the materials that they can and can't use. But we actually had, uh, a meeting with someone that they do, uh, galvanized metal fencing, but it looks like, like a vinyl fence. It has that, but it's designed to be, you know, fire resistant. It's painted and, and coated. And it was a very interesting product and the cost of it is, is pretty reasonable. And so you may see to that point a trend where these other new materials do come into effect that meet those requirements and.
So, so that, that's my only caution, that, that we be careful how we stipulate what the condition may be.
How about a fire-resistant fence on individual lots if it's not built by a developer?
Once again, we can-
Block wall along the other two, fire resistant.
I, I think the block wall along, uh,
Holmes and-
Holmes and, and County Line is a given. So
Okay.
We're only addressing-
We don't need to address that.
One of the conditions of it.
Okay.
So we don't need, what we're addressing is any fencing between the residents and this particular track.
Perfect. Can I make a motion?
What you can do is make a, a suggestion to a condition of it.
Oh.
I would, I would think we would be best on doing that, adding it to a condition.
Yeah, so, um, and we can close the public hearing, but then it, it could be a motion to add a condition on it that stipulates that individual, like the, the-
Fire-resistant.
Other, other perimeter walls be a fire-resistant material and-
Right.
That can be carried through.
Okay, got it.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So, do we have?
So I'll make a motion? Or, condition first?
Yeah, condition first.
Like to make a condition on this property that it have for individual lots that border, um, residential homes, a fire-resistant fence on each lot.
Just to confirm, this is only for the exterior perimeter, not internal?
Right, exterior and on lot cell only, not, yeah.
Which gonna affect eight lots.
Okay.
Okay.
Question. Do we have the ability?
We have a second to that and then we're gonna have a discussion tonight. Somebody want to second that?
Is that me?
Well, you, you made a-
You made the motion.
You made a motion. I need somebody to second it so we can have a discussion. Otherwise it's gonna die for lack of a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Now we can have a discussion.
Can we, is there any way to approve this where it can't be individual lot sales? Has to be a builder.
I don't think we can do that if it-
Can we reduce, I, I worry about the inconsistency of it over time and then how long it's gonna drag out. Just surrounding properties. What if this takes ten years for all fourteen of these lots to get built out? Why everybody has to listen to the construction, the dirt and the chaos?
So, um, I, I will state, your, your sentiment i- is certainly, uh, I think, a valid concern. Because we don't have a, uh, an ordinance or position in the city that prohibits it, we can't condition the project to do that or have that as a requirement. In kind of past experience- In kind of past experience, there are some developers, kind of smaller scale developers, that do work well with this type of smaller scale subdivision. And so it has been where we've seen kind of these type of smaller infill residential subdivisions. They usually end up with a common developer. We can't require it, we can't presume that that will exactly always be the case. But I can think of a few off the top of my head that, that would probably be eyeing a project like this to move forward with, that have done work in Yucapai before, including, certainly there was a one on Rebecca Road, kind of across the street, but a number of other ones that are kind of scattered throughout the city as well.
Other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay, passes three, two. Okay, now back to the track map.
I'll make a motion on, let's see here, make a motion that we follow and accept the staff report on the recommendation regarding track map, two oh six nine nine, and the PAT, I guess, two four zero zero four.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Four, one. Okay, next item on the agenda here. Item three.
Thank you again, honorable chair and planning commissioners. Today bring before you item number three, case number twenty-four dash oh 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 nine, a public hearing entitlement for the review of a planning use permit and architectural review for the construction of a twenty, a two thousand nine hundred and seven square foot Mediterranean restaurant, Rosemary's Cafe, on a point four acre general commercial parcel located at three, 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 four, five Yucapai Boulevard. As I previously mentioned, it is located on a port, a point four acre site on the southeast of Yucapai Boulevard and Tenth Street. The site was previously improved with a non-conforming residence, which had partially been demoed as a part of a dentist's office and has since been completely demolished. It is a generally flat parcel that is, that's land use designation is general commercial with commercial uses to the east, west, east and west and the floodway to the south with the golf course to the north. The proposal is for a two thousand nine hundred and seven square foot Mediterranean restaurant with one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square feet of internal space and an external patio. It includes access provided along Yucapai Boulevard via a twenty-six foot wide drive approach with existing street improvements in place as a part of the widening of Yucapai Boulevard, including curb, commercial drive approach and sidewalk. The site includes sixteen parking spaces and the use is considered a convenience or support use. The proposed elevations are on the screen. The proposed project features a modern design with large glass windows and prominent contrasting framing and a low-slip roof. The proposed restaurant, again, provides one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square foot of internal area with a large wraparound patio, fencing, fountain and perimeter plantings to help delineate that exterior patio area. The building itself has a nineteen-foot peak height and features a low gable roof to the east and west elevations. And the exterior of the building will include a mix of materials like expansive glass elevations with black molyne framing, stucco finish and contrasting semi-gloss trim. Here is another rendering that we're working with the applicant's team on right now. As a part of the project review, an additional condition was added in order to provide good customer service and try to get them to this planning commission meeting rather than the next one, which is over a month from now. They agreed to add a condition. If the planning commission were agreeable to it, that the applicant will work with the city to provide a projecting element along the front elevation, kind of as shown here, which will provide just a little bit more depth along the front portion of the building facing Yucapai Boulevard. So I'll go back and forth really quick so you can kind of see the difference. So here is the area that we're talking about here. And then here. Just a little pop. The landscaping for the site will include a perimeter screening and ornamental trees and shrubs, including some deciduous trees at the front and rear of the site. As a part of the environmental review for the project, the site is within a developed portion of the city and qualifies for a class thirty-two infill exemption as well as a class three categorical exemption, essentially the small structure commercial exemption. As a part of the project's review, notices were sent to all contiguous property owners and no responses were received. Here's a couple pictures of the site. This is when the two units were there. They're currently demolished and the site is a little worse for the wear. They're still cleaning it up, so I wasn't able to get a clean picture of the site. But I know that they're working diligently on prepping the site for future construction. And therefore, it is staff's recommendation that you approve the planning use permit subject to the conditions of approval and if acceptable, approve the architectural design and preliminary landscaping, including the added condition of approval. Adopt the findings for the planning use permit as contained in the agenda report. Adopt a categorical exemption, class thirty-two and class three of the SEQA, of SEQA, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. I am here, if you guys have any additional questions, and I know the applicant is here as well. It's been a long process for her, so I know that she's very eager to continue moving forward.
Any questions to staff at this time?
I do. So will it have a reciprocal agreement for easement through the car wash?
So they've left it open.
I see that.
If that were to be the case, but right now that's fenced off.
Okay.
That's, that's more idyllic. If they, if they do agree to it, they, they think they're open to it, but they haven't discussed that yet.
Okay. And the, as it is right now, there's kind of a combined driveway on Yucapai Boulevard? So this splits it off to its own separate driveway, correct?
So there is, and there is actually a separate kind of curb cut. So it is kind of its own separate one.
There's that little curb to run over if you're coming down there, right?
Yep. And that, you know, that was part of the design recommendation from the prior owner of the property to have it set up that way. But certainly, it is, you know, it is an option for them to work and do the reciprocal access easement and certainly does provide, you know, some tangible benefit as well.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that was just.
Question.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. In this, in this view, I'll start with that one. The, there's an electrical box on the, I think, the upper side, which is, I think, east. Is that the east side of the property, the front? There's a big electrical box, but the drawing, the layout doesn't show anything for that. Is that taken into consideration in the plans? Because it doesn't, it's not mentioned anywhere. It's an electrical, yes, yes.
I know there were.
It's part of the property, right?
Yeah. I know there were early discussions with SCE about relocating. I don't know where those ended up, but I know that the applicant had engaged SCE about that.
Yeah, I believe that would be a discussion between SCE and the applicant because I'm sure they have their electrical.
Coming in.
Well, that, that's a, what do you call it, transformer?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if it were to remain in place.
And they have an easement there right now, so.
If it were to remain in place, it would be required to have some additional screening as far as landscaping.
Which, the landscaping will only be around the backside of it, not on the front side of it because it's on the sidewalk. Other questions of staff?
Landscaping view, if you go to the landscaping view, I was wondering that one there. I assume that the fire marshal has looked at this and fire truck, there's only one, one way in and out, correct? And also for the BRTech, I'll say, trash to get in and out there. In the landscape view, the cans or the receptacles are on the property line? And then in the plan view, it shows them near the parking.
Correct, yeah, so the landscaping plan, because it's really designed to show.
It's just landscaping.
The landscaping. That, that was something that changed as the project went on. It's not meeting its setback requirements with the current location of the trash can. And so after a set of reviews, they had to update that. But often the landscape architect is a different person than the drafts person, so just feels me to make them redo that.
But someone has looked at getting the truck in and out to get.
It has been reviewed.
I guess they have to push the bins out, take or back, back it in and do all of that?
Oh, I, I don't know that we noticed BRTech is a part of this, but I think based on the fact that fire reviewed it, it's wide enough and has the turnaround capability for fire. I would assume that a trash truck could get there as well. Again, that's, that's me making an assumption, I don't, I don't know for sure on that.
Other questions, staff? Okay, is the applicant here tonight and would you like to address the planning commission?
Hi. This is Miriam and it's a pleasure to meeting you guys and thank you for all your help. And if you have any question, and thank you, Christian Farmer, for all your help. Thank you. I'm ready for if you have any question.
Any questions of the applicant? I'd just like to say, I think it's great that you wanna have Rosemary's Cafe in Yucapai.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very excited to bring a new job and business to Yucapai because I love this city and I'm hoping it's gonna be a very nice restaurant. Not only a restaurant, but it's a community hub to people can, you know, enjoy, entertain, like not only a restaurant and have, keep people have more fun. Music, jazz and, and bar, of course.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Are there any public comments to this item on the agenda?
No public comments.
Hearing none, we'll turn it back to the commission. Comments, questions, motions?
I'm good with it, I think it's great.
Does that mean you're making a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve it.
Well.
However, would you like me to word it?
Make a motion to approve it and you can read the case number. That would be probably the appropriate thing to do so staff can take down that.
All right, motion to remove Rosemary's Cafe, PLN, PHE, two four zero 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 nine.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, well, motion is second. Any other discussion? Comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Good luck.
And thank you.
Item number four. No. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
All right. So tonight I will be presenting the update to the general plan safety element for, for it. And so just as kind of, kind of frame of reference, so safety elements are one of the seven required elements of the city's general plan. Now, we did recently update our safety element as part of Senate Bill ten thirty-five. Anytime you update your housing element, you automatically get triggered to update your safety element as well. And so we had followed through with that update and addressed a number of different components that needed to, to be modified based on new and updated state laws. However, one of the things that occurred after we did the update was the State Farm Marshal's Office released new fire severity maps. And our safety element references that safety map as our fire safety overlay. And so those boundaries, our energy in our plan are cement to correlate to those severity maps. And so because there is now disconnect between the two, we have to update our safety element to reflect essentially what the new maps show. And so this is an example of kind of the old map. You kind of do see the higher fire severity zone along kind of the periphery of the city. Then you have kind of the lower or, you know, high fires severity zone, but not the very high fire kind of encroaching upon the middle of the city and kind of along the edges as well. The new maps really do follow along the city's kind of topography. And so you do see it encroach a little bit further interior to the city, but some of the pockets that were inside the middle of the city have disappeared. And then the new fire maps also include essentially a new designation, which is called the moderate fire severity zone. And so based on how we identified the zones, we have FR one, which is the very high, FR two, which was the high. And now we've added in an FR three to correspond to that new moderate fire severity zone. And it, now what this kind of ultimately means is that more land that could be developed in the city will be subject to the fire overlay building code requirements, so both in terms of the development code and municipal code. One thing I do wanna note, these maps don't correlate to how the fire insurance stuff. So just because the new state maps showed up, doesn't mean that your insurance rates automatically follow along with it. However, insurance companies use a lot of the same technologies, so they probably were either counting on how those maps were gonna kind of lay out. And then certainly what this does mean, at least for, for property owners, is that if they are within that designation, they are subject to disclosure requirements. If they are in the very high fire severity zone, it does require fire department inspection prior to close of escrow. And so that is something that will be triggered, that is already triggered with the new state maps. And then our map, we didn't modify the state's map, so we didn't try and add additional areas into the fire zone. We essentially took what the state gave us and said, all right, this is what we have to do and that is what it is. And that is the update to the safety element. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Questions for staff?
Can you go back to the map really quick? I just had a question, it made me giggle. How come there's that little tiny yellow section in Hidden Meadows that's out of the red zone?
That, I'm gonna presume, so I don't know all of the methodology of how they did it. It's through Cal Fire and so they ended up providing to us. A lot of it, I think, corresponds to development. And so there is a portion of Hidden Meadows where this is a little bit more, I guess, quasi-built out. And so I presume maybe the yellow follows along here, including the Riverside County.
So the city actually just had a podcast type release of several different fire experts and they talked about this a little bit. It has to do with the fire modeling being included with, with kind of the underlying map as well. So areas that are really steep or that wind could carry an existing fire to. I guess they got increased in severity. It was actually really interesting. I usually don't find those that interesting, but that one was pretty cool.
I don't know, maybe we should check homeowner records and see who resides in those areas and where they're employed. That might tell us something.
You set up my thoughts.
So, other questions of staff? I have a question. What if we didn't pass this?
We are obligated to pass it, so it will still be kind of applicable regardless of.
So what you're saying is this is a rubber stamp?
That is, that is exactly what we have to, to do. You know, it is, you know, I'll, you know, point out, even my house is now in the high fire severity zone and it was not before. And so it is just part of that, that new model, so.
Okay. So we incorporated to get away from big government, to govern ourselves only to be mandated by them still. I'll stop with that. Other comments? And I presume we need a motion. Oh, well, first of all, no, I take that back. I presume we have no more public comment, there's no more public here?
Not unless Matty wants to. No. No, no public.
And we don't have the state here as the applicant, so.
No.
And as we all know, as you, the state put a map to it. Private enterprises that has an opportunity to collect a dollar off of it will definitely take an opportunity to take advantage of this, meaning insurance rates.
So my understanding is that it doesn't matter if we adopt it or not. They have their own, like proprietary maps that they use?
And being in the real estate business, they do work off of that. But now this just gives them more justification. That's what it does, so. Okay, all right, then we'll bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion?
I'll just motion to approve case number PLN PDE two five zero 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 one.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion a second. Just for, so you know, I'm not trying to put pressure on you. Typically, the chair shouldn't be making motions or seconds. So it's not that I'm trying to play. The chair generally should not be making motions or seconds. So I'm not trying to put pressure on you, but that's trying to give the commission to be able to act on independently from that, so.
We're just all stepping up to your arnerness to begin with.
You're very perceptive. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Opposed.
All right.
Motion passes three two. It passed without any of us, actually. All right, item number five.
All right, so this is ordinance number four fifty, or a policy determination twenty-five dash zero 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 two. And so this is really kind of a throwing the kitchen sink of a bunch of little code updates that we needed to do and kind of combining them into one. I do want to note, city is going to be undertaking or is in the early stages of doing a comprehensive development code update. However, a number of these are addressing things that needed to kind of happen beforehand. And either based on updates to state law, either housing element program requirements that we needed to meet based on our housing element schedule that we had adopted before and other stuff. And so the update itself follows for these different, kind of twenty-four different sections. Either is to address compliance with state law, to implement the housing element programs, implement some of the economic development and fiscal sustainability goals established by a city council, enhancing public safety kind of requirements and issues that we've had throughout the years and that PD has flagged. Lastly, it's kind of reflecting, launching internal procedures and processes. And then the final component is general cleanup. And so the different topics I'll present hit one or more of these as we go through. I'm just going to provide kind of a summary of what we have in staff report because if I wrote and put the entire code section on here, it'd be very dry. And reading code is already kind of dry anyways. So the first section that we'll talk about is section number two. I'm following the sections as they're called out in the ordinance itself. So section one is kind of introduction. Section two is changes to the conditional use permit code section. Kind of the biggest change along there is we have in our, in our conditional use permit, we have almost a carryover of what the land use compliance review allows. And so it has it in two different spots to minimize the duplication. And if there's changes that happen, we're removing the duplicate text, so then that way it's only in one spot. Our code also has a component where arcades require conditional use permit. So there are one use that, for some reason, has always triggered specifically conditional use permit. Of all the uses, it's one that has been called out, but we've never had issues with arcades. And so that is being proposed to be removed. And then also adding in, and this will tie into subsequent sections, certain alcohol establishments and massage therapy establishments would then be subject to conditional use permit as part of a new project. And so this is addressed state law, public safety, our procedures, and cleanup across those different conditional use permit changes. Section three, so the next topic, is adding a revocation section to our development code. So in our conditions of approval that you guys review for these different entitlements, it talks about if they don't comply with the conditions, that we can essentially take away their project approval. However, it's not actually spelt out in our development code. So this just formalizes the code procedures that go with it. It's very standard on it. And so it just ties back into a procedure that we already have and just make sure it's actually codified in our development code. Now, section four is our land use compliance review section. This, as I kind of referenced, you know, had a lot of parallel with the conditional use permit. So this is cleaning up that section itself. Based on state law, most residential projects, we typically allowed four to be processed with the land use compliance review with state law changes. That number is now increased to ten. We have been doing that as a matter of practice based on the state law, but this is making the update in the code. Just some clarification, for all ground mounted signs are subject to the land use compliance review for signs. We are also adding in some flexibility for mixed-use development along our RM twenty-four residential projects that are along major corridors. So Oakland Road as an example allows high-density residential development. It's a big key commercial corridor as well. There's a lot of people travel on it. So allowing some additional flexibility for retail generating uses in addition to the residential was also added. Adding in a streamlined process for recently expired projects. So if let's say a project has expiration date of tomorrow, you know, but none of the code changes happen. Historically, they would have to go back through planning commission, go through the whole kind of rigmarole. And this would allow for them to resubmit the project and go through administrative process, given that none of the general plan policies or code changes have impacted the project. So memorializes that the planning commission had already met the findings for approval of that project. And so just provides a much streamlined version for them to maintain the project entitlements. And then it also adds in contract living health facilities, which is kind of different than a traditional, like a residential care facility into the residential districts as well. Now, section five is certificate of land use. So this is essentially establishing a zoning compliance process for new businesses. So the city historically had a annual business license requirement. So every business that showed up and did work in the city had to submit a business license. We have since kind of changed the process and got rid of that annual requirement. And so this is to look at what the planning department view was before with business licenses is, is this business allowed in this district? Is this allowable use here? And it just facilitates that review, gives them the clearance. They need permits from building and safety and make sure that all those are tied together so that before someone starts operating a business, they don't realize that, oh, wait, I'm not allowed to be here. We can at least head it off and kind of fly any kind of key issues that could be in place and making sure that they're able to operate effectively moving forward. Now, section six is our tentative track map procedures. Again, as I referenced, residential projects that are ten units or less are now ministerial approval. And so this makes the same changes that the land use compliance review did for multifamily, for residential subdivision projects. And then two other kind of cleanup items is in that code section, it required us to do a project notice for certain, you know, ministerial projects. So a project that does not require any planning commission approval, we would still be doing a notice, which means that then someone can appeal it and essentially create a discretionary project. And then if we were to overrule that, it would create some legal challenges, so we're getting rid of that. And then another provision that we're cleaning up is if it is subject to public hearing, there was a provision in code that allowed me the flexibility to just say, we're not going to do it. And that's not exactly a very transparent process, or there's not a lot of rationale for why that would be the case. And so it also removes that and just keeps it consistent that if it's ministerial, it's internal. If it's public hearing, it's a public hearing, and that's just how the process needs to be. And there's no shortcuts one way or another that can kind of override that process. Section seven, not season seven, is high-density residential. Again, this is where allowing the mixed-use development along key corridors such as Oakland Road. So it's encouraging the development of the housing element sites in the city's general plan and housing element. It's also to provide sales tax opportunities along those key corridors. And there's a state law, which is called SB suits, which allows for commercial land to do residential development. And this essentially allows the opposite, where it says this is residential development, but we also want to get some commercial opportunities that can be done through that as well. And so it does kind of the same component. Next section is our multiple residential. Again, cleaning up the item of new state law where ten units are approved ministerial based on those new state laws. Adding some clarity for the development standards to also reference the citywide design guidelines so that that way if a developer or resident is looking through the code, they can see all of the different components that they need to follow. And then the last one is adding in a provision for small lot subdivision projects based on our housing element program number twenty. We have these type of projects where we do detached condominiums, so they're meant to emulate a single-family development, but they follow the multifamily density requirements. However, condominiums have a lot of additional kind of process that goes into it. If the intent is to help encourage affordable, unattainable, single-family houses or provide homeownership, this program is to really just simplify that mapping process. It allows the same prototype that we already do, but allows flexibility for either condominium or simple fee ownership in lieu of just only doing the condominium approach. Section nine is our residential parking lot standards. This is just adding some clarity on the density bonus parking standards as well as referencing small lot subdivision to the detached condominium category. So small lot subdivision and detached condominiums have essentially the same requirements to just how you want to map them as an applicant and sell it to the future buyers is their prerogative. Now, section ten is probably where we have the most amount of kind of minor changes. One, this adds in kind of the small lot subdivision standards. It does provide a little bit additional clarity between the RM and RM twenty-four distinction because RM twenty-four does not follow these same standards. It adds a reference to the density bonus and design guidelines. And then a lot of it is adding in some of this objective design requirements. So based on state law and SB three thirty, the planning commission or the city can't deny projects that, you know, you can't use a objective or subjective metric to weigh against a project. So if it says, you know, be compatible as, that doesn't really mean anything in the context. And so there were a number of different kind of components, such as like open space amenities, trash enclosure, where it had kind of a shall or very kind of more passive requirement. And so since it was the intent that those would be required, it just strengthens that language up to be a bit more deliberate so then that way it can be more bulletproof against state law for SB three thirty. Section eleven is establishing the conditional use permit for certain off-site alcohol sales establishments where more than five percent of the retail areas for alcohol sales. So what we would refer to as kind of liquor stores essentially would follow the conditional use permit requirements. Those that already exist would be considered as deemed approved. So as long as they comply with the performance requirements, aren't creating an issue where PD is constantly going out there, they will continue to operate. But this gives a little bit more flexibility for new projects, for us to issue conditions of approval and have the police department involved with the entitlement of those projects since before they were just allowed as is. And so it gives our ability to help with the police department enforcement of these uses as they sometimes generate issues if they're not operated appropriately. And similarly, section twelve does similar provisions, but this is related to massage establishments. The city has a very relaxed allowance for massage establishments, far more relaxed than other places. And so we do have some very good operating massage establishments, but we do have some that are definitely a bigger challenge with law enforcement. And so this also kind of triggers the same requirement. If they're, you know, consistent, comply, they meet the code, they're operating effectively, they're continuing to exist. But if they fall out of standards, then you guys will have a chance to review that entitlement and go, hey, should this be still in business or should it not? Section thirteen is just adding a definition for contract living health facilities based on state law definition. Section fourteen also adds in a definition for small lot subdivision into the back of the development code and ties back into the other sections I already talked about. Sections fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen address minor changes to the city's sign code, really on the sign regulation intent, and adds some additional provisions and clarity for city-controlled signs and city communication billboards. So it just helps add a little bit of clarity on those provisions and make sure that it's a little bit more clear and consistent based on some questions that we've had from outsiders. Section seventeen is to add a little bit additional clarity to prohibited signs, clarifying that like flashing signs are prohibited. So even if it's not a, you know, flashing sign, but if it's an LED screen or TV screen that's flashing, it still counts as a sign, and so it's still subject to the prohibition requirements. Section nineteen is just a change to the development code to clarify that commercial marijuana uses are prohibited except otherwise permitted within the city's municipal code. So an example is that delivery services are allowed pursuant to state law. We can't prohibit it. Delivery services are not a zoning code issue. It's a municipal code issue. And so this just makes sure that it ties back into it. No changes to the actual policy or proposed with this ordinance is just making sure that where it's a policy decision, it's in the municipal code. And then from a land use perspective, as long as it's prohibited, it's prohibited in the zoning district as well. Section twenty is modifying height regulations. So city council had approved resolution number twenty twenty-four fifty-three last year that includes a fair share provision in funding for projects that trigger a ladder truck. So based on the development that we have in place now, there is a need for the city to acquire a ladder truck. And so this makes sure that those, that policy is implemented in the development code. It also adds flexibility for medical buildings and hotels to go twenty-five percent or twenty-five feet over the maximum height district increase within that district. Want to note, it's still less than what the maximum building heights are allowed within the city. Institutional district allows taller structures in that district. And then also gives some additional flexibility for certain architectural features, building entrances to be a little bit more grand. So if they want to have more of a tower element, they can do that. And then clarification is in our development code. It says the building official can weigh in on structure increases. It's not how it is operated, and so it's clarifying that the community development director would be the one that weighs in on those requests. Section twenty-one itself is just adding in our standard conditions of approval for landscaping into the development code. They had operated within our administrative guidelines as kind of an old handout that we had for a couple decades. And so this is just memorializing it into the actual code where it should be. And then the last kind of two are very simple ones. So applications triggering automatic withdrawal of inactive projects. So that way we don't have a project sitting, you know, on someone's desk for four years that no one's done anything with. It's just saying, okay, if it's hit this point, then the project's considered null and void. And that way we don't have something technically on the ticker, the project timeline, saying, hey, it's been sitting at the city for so long, no, it's because it's a dead project and we're just automatically just recognizing that fact. Section twenty-three is establishing a homeowner's association requirement for subdivisions over fifty units or master planned communities. So rather than an LMD for, let's say, a larger project, it would trigger the HOA. So then that way the homeowners are more engaged on the maintenance responsibilities versus a contract that the city has across its, you know, entire broad board of different LMDs. And then the last one is establishing some flexibility for what's called a timely file map. So in our subdivision map stuff, you'll have a condition saying you must meet all your conditions for the recording of a map by this timeline. However, sometimes when they're doing the process, working through the county surveyor's office and getting everything recorded, there may be some delays, and so they may not hit that deadline. And so this gives a little bit of a grace period for when those cases occur for them to still finish the map, get it recorded. But also recognizing that. But also recognizing that, you know, the project does have to get done. So it gives them the wiggle room that they need to make sure that they can finish their efforts. And then the last one, going back to the safety element, is making the changes to the development code to reflect the FR three district being added in based on the new fire, new safety element update that we just talked about earlier. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy answer any questions that you guys may have on any of the different sections.
Yeah, I got a question. On section two dealt with the alcohol CUP. Does there need to be anything in there regarding wineries?
Not, certainly the planning commission can recommend that that be added in as well. For the wine country specific plan, that conditional use permit was added as a requirement in that specific plan. And so that is already a requirement for those to get a conditional use permit. So our code, the development code doesn't need to have that reflected separately.
Well, I'll trust your judgment because if you're not here and somebody else is here and they don't add it in, if section two's here, then it would be added in, right? Regardless of who sits in your chair?
Because it's in the specific plan document, that would be the document that they would reference for the approvals of a project. So that would essentially overrule this code provisions because they'll have to follow that, so.
All right. And section five on business license, I was thinking about Hickory, the restaurant, when they added a bar. Would they need to come back even though they're an existing business to get a license for the alcohol?
For the certificate of land use, they would not have to do it. With the business license, they would always have to keep a business license in it. This would just be if it's a new business that shows up. So let's say, you know, Chipotle is there, they're not having to come back to the city every year. But if someone else shows up and it's entirely different operation and outfit, then they'll go through and make sure, yep, this use is allowed, there's no changes to the building that's needed. Okay, then you're good to go, you can operate.
So theoretically, any existing business, if they want to add a bar can do it, no problem?
That is correct, yes.
You're saying yes?
That is correct, yeah. Per how the city's alcohol establishments are, that is. They'll have to go through ABC, which is a state agency. But, you know, the city doesn't have a trigger requirement for them to go through something different.
And then signs fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty. Would those changes or additions, would they speak to the concern that we had brought before us on La Quinta? Where we talked about developmental code and signs are coming up, does that kind of address all of that?
This one I'd address those specific signs, that specific change will be forthcoming.
Other questions?
Yes. On the healthcare facilities and residential neighborhoods, can you explain that a little bit more?
So these are, so it's similar to like a residential care facility that's allowed in all kind of residential zones. This one is kind of a unique classification because it's for kind of people that are terminally ill. And so it's people that are kind of completely non-ambulatory where they're, they're really just not very active. And so it's providing kind of a safe, comfortable spot for them in their final days. And so that's the, kind of the state definition for what those facilities are. And so they're technically slightly different subset than other residential care facilities that are a bit more active in terms of, you know, having, you know, a caretaker and people coming and going to it and, you know, residents that are much more mobile.
So is that a requirement from the state that we have to allow those in all residential areas?
So the, it is a residential type use. And so it's just adding that note into it and then adding some of the definition to make that clarity.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to sound insensitive to this, but that is one of the problems with some of the care facilities is the number of ambulance trips that are generated. You know, and they tend to run fire and ambulance. So I don't, you know, that would be my only concern or what might be raised by residents. And if you have these in Chapman Heights, you know, I don't know what the feeling is on that. That's, that's one question that I had. The other one is on seventeen, I think it is. Section seventeen. Actually, it's sixteen and seventeen, I believe. City communication billboards. Can you explain that one a little bit more detail for me?
So it would be essentially billboard structures that are controlled by the city or owned by the city.
Owned by the city?
Yeah.
Basically the same type of billboard as we already approved?
It would be, those were privately owned, but it'd be something similar to that, yes.
So it would be, but I thought there was a moratorium on only billboards allowed. The three billboards that are currently or were currently, two of them been constructed. There's one left to be constructed.
Yeah.
Up near County Line Road. But isn't there under, wasn't that, only those three were allowed? And when that came before planning commission was approved ultimately by city council?
So the way that that, that code was set up was at any, on privately owned land. And so the city may have other need for messaging signs, not necessarily as billboards themselves, but as communication, you know, about events or something like that. And so it gives a flexibility for kind of those different elements with it. But as long as it's a city-owned structure.
But it's really not, it says, you know, just like the city has agreements on those billboards to be able to, any emergency or anything else, the city has the right to take precedence over any other message and the city and businesses in town have preference and also are given the opportunity to have free advertisement on that. But isn't this basically just a city-owned? You know, we had, basically three of them were approved and now the city's looking at owning one on a piece of property. Does the city already own a piece of property they're planning on doing a billboard on?
We do not, but it would, but one of the outcomes could be that, that potential.
So it's a way to add a fourth billboard. Do you know where the, is there a location that's looked at right now?
If I were to venture kind of a guess, I would probably closer to future Wildwood interchange would probably be where there's a gap between planned billboards and existing ones would be one spot.
Yeah, just, just reading through it, it just seems to me it's a way for the city to circumvent private owners from having a billboard because there's a requirement or the approval was only for three billboard locations within the city along the freeway. And so it seems kind of iffy to be doing a fourth location that the city owns that because the city owns it, it's not, it's not excluded because of the statute that was passed. Is that pretty much what it is?
Yeah, so the statute that was passed is, is pretty explicit in that it is on privately owned.
Private property. But if the city's given a piece of property in a development and the city owns the billboard, then that's a way around that for a fourth billboard.
If council were to pursue that, yeah.
What we're providing is an exemption from the city.
That's basically what it is.
I mean, this call what it is.
Wants to do a billboard.
This call what it is, yeah. It's not okay for the private sector to go out and do it.
But the city can do it.
Yeah. I have real issues with that as well. And more than just on this item. So we all need to play by the same rules.
And I personally believe there's room for a couple more billboards to eliminate some of the smaller ones as an offset. I'm not opposed to additional billboards. I just don't like the city being able to, Christian.
Do you have Tony on the timer?
My three minutes are up.
Well, and once, once again, just to piggyback on that a little bit is, is unfortunately it sort of opens the door for the city to get out there and get in, in competing with the private industry.
Right.
Need to stay in their own lane.
So does item seventeen, section seventeen, does it specifically prohibit flashing signs? Is that what it's stated? Are prohibited? So flashing sign out there on the freeways prohibited? Or is, if it's already there, existing are exempt?
So it's to address, so the way that the sign code like prohibitions were, it was set up kind of on assumption of older technology. And so we've been seeing kind of proliferation of people like putting like TV screens like in the window of their business and having that flash and then we're getting complaints from drivers saying that it's kind of there. So it's to help clarify that that is still part of that prohibition. That is not, you don't have a workaround just because technology allows you to have a different type of material to do that projection.
Who's drawing the line on that?
For?
What, what is prohibited and what is permitted?
For the flashing sign.
Flashing sign, yeah.
Who's out there enforcing the sign?
Well, I mean, at what, at what point? Is it because it's a certain size? It, it has just a visual scene of letters or a figure or?
It could be anything, just the rapid flashing of something.
So we're prohibiting all flashing signs?
It actually says signs having any animated, moving, or rotating parts or emulates those parts through a display. Signs allowed to or painted on trailers, signs which make sounds, obscure. So there's a whole.
But, but my point is, I know there's a list there, but there's, it's hard to draw that line on some of that stuff. And that's, that's where I'm coming.
Yeah, so the code changes themselves are, pre-minor, so like the animated, moving, rotating parts. The code changes, adds in or emulates those parts through a display. You know, having the sign a fit style window or a structure, you know, in addition to like a painted vehicle. Also there in any sign or lighting device, whether on exterior of a building or inside of a window which is visible beyond the batteries of the lot or parcel or from any public hideaway with intermittent flashing, rotating, blinking, or strobe light illumination. And so this follows kind of a similar provision that the code had. And it's just making sure that it's clear that, that, that distraction isn't there. So an example for like the billboard, the display has to last at least eight seconds to not be that type of visual impairment. Whereas a rapid flashing light can really kind of change how the light is viewed, especially in, at night. And so that was the, the concern that we had. And so just helping to amplify that provision that was already in place.
So if somebody had a sign in their business in their window and it displayed, that there was no display change for nine seconds and then it changed again, that would be okay?
It wouldn't fall under the flashing lights now.
Okay, as long as it was longer than eight seconds?
Yeah.
So if you've got it's open, open, open.
And if you just went.
Or closed, 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 you're not allowed to have that now or you haven't always been able to have that.
Technically, we're not supposed to have it. This just helps clarify that provision, given that, especially I think with some of the newer sign technology that people are putting in, we've been starting to get some concerns of how bright those flashes are.
So it sounds like we have an eight-second rule now. Are you ready for a motion? No, I'm not yet. I have some other questions, other questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking, you know, a little further. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen all deal with, you know, the city, city sign, city billboard, city-owned billboard. And so I have a promise, one of the questions I would have is, how far away are we from the larger plan that you were talking about?
The larger development code update?
Yeah.
Probably at least a year.
A year? And when, when was this started? When did you start working on this plan, the temporary one?
This one? Probably a couple months. There's been a few different code pieces that we needed to address and so it just kind of got added together.
And there's, there's a few other items in here that concern me. But I just think where we're at as a city with potential change in city manager and everything. And I know this was kind of started by a previous city manager. And I, for one, I'm kind of opposed to implementing just this portion of it when we're a year away from a full development code. Because I think there's some things in here that are at least a concern for me, so.
And just as procedure, you know, certainly as part of any direction, you could recommend, you know, portions of the code and say, these are the ones that, that, you know, we're not in supportive of and that can be presented to city council as well.
And for me to do that, because of the size of the document and the number of items, I'd have to have more time to go through it.
I think one of our options is, is that we can postpone this item.
Yeah.
I think that would be good so we can all look at it a little closer and.
And I'm in, I'm in agreement to that as well. I think this would be good though if we have other questions about this so that the staff could get, know some of our concerns, other questions?
I was going to question seventeen, so I think I'm good.
All right. I have a couple of them as well. On item number six, and you talked about approval and ten lots or less or smaller projects, okay? Would that be referring to maybe like a, the same rules you used to have with parcel maps? And in that parcel map now, even though you get beyond five lots, you know, it becomes a subdivision. So now is a parcel map like nine lots and less?
It will essentially kind of follow the same thing. So a parcel map for, to think of it today, that process went from four to now ten. But it's the, kind of the same thing and it's based on the law. And so the land use compliance review for the multifamily followed the same principle. And so now it's going from four to.
So now if I went out and bought a piece of property and wanted to divide it up into ten lots, I could process it like a parcel map?
Yeah, it would be administrative.
No public hearing? Condos ADU sales, you mentioned, and I know this came down and I don't know if the city passed it or not, but they, at one time the state said if, let's say you built a second unit on a property and that, that you could actually create an HOA and then you could sell that second unit, actually deed it away. But it had, that had to be approved by the city to adopt that. Was that adopted by the city?
We did not set up a condo provision for ADUs now.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify because I didn't hear that coming, but I know the state has been pushing on that, which is just another form of a cancer to the community.
Yeah.
Twenty-three, on the lots, on the lot size area, you said any, any development of fifty lots or less or over fifty units, okay? Is there a determination on lot size to say if you had a thousand acres, well, we'll say five hundred acres out there and you wanted to do two and a half acre ranchos and you did fifty-five of them?
Then it would trigger the HOA for?
You'd have to create an HOA on that. So you're mandated anything over fifty units has to be an HOA?
Yeah.
In fifty units being of a single-family nature?
That is correct.
And then of course, number four with the mixed use of commercial and residential. So that's only in the RM zoning?
That would be the RM twenty-four.
Only in the RM twenty-four?
Yeah, only along RM twenty-four and then along the arterial streets.
Okay, like Oakland Road, I think is the only one we have RM twenty-four on, isn't it?
That's the only one that right now would be subject to it, certainly if in future. Certainly, if in future housing elements, we have to add more, then that would apply to those as well.
Okay, so it only affects one parcel there in Oakland Road between Colorado and.
There's, uh, two parcels, but yeah.
But, but I mean, in, it's in that section there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, that's all the questions I have. Other questions? Comments?
I, I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot of real viable points in here that I agree with, but there's just some that concern me that, uh, and I definitely want to look at it longer.
I, I personally would support a motion if we postponed, postponed this to a further date.
I'll make that motion that we postpone this item until, uh, how about two meetings out?
We probably need to specify a date.
Yeah, a date certain. So, the next, um, date that we were planning to have, uh, planning commission was on July sixteenth. So, that would be the, the date. So, that would give us about a month.
So, I'll make a motion that we postpone this item to July sixteenth meeting. And, uh, that'd give us some time to have some conversation with staff and for some questions.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that. And just to clarify, no public comments, public hearing?
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I know with no one here is.
I didn't see him sneak in yet. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. We have discussion. We'll get the questions to the staff in a timely manner so they're not waiting like a week before the sixteenth or something to get input. Right, and what we should do is if you have more time to review this or perhaps Ben, you might, uh, I'm, I'm sure Ben is very, um, been very acceptable to meeting with him and concerns about this, about any items in it.
And certainly, you know, this is recognizing because of this is kind of the, the kitchen sink ordinance is, is, you know, if there are specific provisions as we get to a decision, you know, we can flag each individual one where if, let's say, hey, council, you know, we support all this, but we have concerns about this one and we want our voices known. So, when you guys make the final policy dis- determination, you have our viewpoint that's, that's definitely intended to be part of the, the process. That way, you guys can weigh in, you know, this is a combination of a lot of different things and a lot of different kind of direction. And so, um, you know, it's, it's not, you know, it won't necessarily be batting, uh, you know, perfectly on everything for, for everyone, so.
Okay, I, I remember a comment made to me when I was a little kid, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So, we don't need to have differences between the city and private, private industry out there. So, I, I'm, I'm opposed to those items that, that, that show preference to the city, especially when a deal's going out there promoting what other private industry does.
Okay, I think we have something else. We had a motion and a second.
Do we have a motion, second? Any other comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Any announcements?
Uh, we will not have a meeting right before Fourth of July, so, um, we get a month reprieve. So, all you guys have a wonderful, uh, Fourth of July celebration. As, uh, you guys are probably aware, aware of, um, firework fines have increased. So, if you guys get caught lighting off fireworks, PD and fire will probably be issuing, uh, pretty hefty fines, so.
See if we can get a refund.
So, be safe with it, but other than that, um, have a, a wonderful celebration of, of our, of our country, so.
Any other announcements, comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. Um, on a previous vote, my colleagues all voted yes, I voted no. Um, this is in regards to the La Quinta sign. After further review, I would just like to say I made a mistake and I wanted to be transparent. I've driven by the site many times since that vote. And the sign, in my mind, was a lot larger than what I was reading. So, the concept of the sign size and where it was, um, I just wanted to say that I apologize, I made a mistake. And the sign does look good. I mean, it, it fits within the building size and the layout. So, I just wanted to, to bring that up that, I apologize for that vote. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I, just something quick. I spoke at the city council meeting, uh, a week ago and, uh, on the development impact fee issue which passed three to two. Um, and, and I made a statement there that, uh, you know, we, we talk about how we need to generate money and that, but, but in turn, we need to, we need to have a more affordable housing. Um, we always got to think about this, what we're doing here and, and, and how we approach this, you know, to a- achieve certain goals and that. And sometimes we put a burden on some and in turn, we're trying to achieve different results from it. Um, and by adding more fees, it's not going to make homes more affordable. And I didn't make that, I made that comment as a private individual, but it's something that, you know, we got to think about when we are, uh, up here and, and talking about any project. Uh, because every item that we impose on somebody is going to add a cost to the housing. So, it's just something we need to keep in mind and not pointing out to anybody or any particular thing, but just as in general, we, uh, it, it's good to keep that, that thought, I believe, so. Based on that, no other comments in that? Meeting's adjourned.